All right, you can go ahead. Tim, we're good to go?
Good to go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town meeting information session. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tony Mizuko. I'm the town manager here in Norwood. We are going to go through the items on the warrant for our special town meeting. We have a number of department heads here as subject matter experts for certain questions, and then CPA has an article, and we have members from the CPA committee here to answer questions on that article as well. As we go through, this is a great time to ask questions. We tend to focus these information sessions on asking questions more than giving your opinion. That certainly we recommend you save for town meeting. But feel free to ask any questions you have. We'll go through each of the articles. At the end, if we didn't get a chance to get to your question, we will circle back, and at the end you can ask questions on any of the articles that you want. If we are getting a lot of questions on individual articles, we might pause, get through the rest of the articles, and then go back to the ones folks have questions on, because that is what we're here to do. So, without further ado, we're going to go ahead and get started. The first town meeting is next week, don't forget. We are on a Thursday as our first day, which is a little unusual. We usually start on a Monday, but sometimes based on schedules and holidays, we end up having to start on a Thursday for a special. So with that, we're going to kick right into it. Article number one, I'll give folks a second to get their papers shuffled, and incidentally, we do have copies of the presentation, the warrant, the yellow sheets up here, if anyone would like physical copies. So Article One would be an appropriation out of free cash for body worn cameras. Body worn cameras that would be utilized by the police department have more and more become the norm in Massachusetts as well as elsewhere in the country. We have been moving steadily towards it. I don't want to say slowly, I don't want to say too quickly. They are very costly. We were waiting until we were able to get grant funding to offset a significant portion of the cost, because as you can tell with the total cost, even though the requested appropriation is $180,000, that's with a $250,000 grant from the state. So that will implement them, we'll be able to operate them for about five years on that, and then we'll have to look at whether there's additional equipment costs or replacement costs after that. There's a lot of backend costs to the police cameras. It's not just the camera and the training and everything else that goes along with it, but it's all that data being stored. It's quite complicated. Some towns that jumped into this five, seven, eight years ago, were spending a million dollars or more for smaller departments, so we feel it's the right time for us to move into this, and candidly, we want to take advantage of the fact that we can get the state to pay for more than half of it. Questions on body worn cameras? Is that a question, or just somebody joining?
I think that was just somebody joining.
Okay. So Article Two would be an appropriation into the stabilization fund. So the stabilization fund is our general purpose stabilization fund, our general purpose savings fund, if you will, our rainy day fund, sometimes as it's referred to. Rating agencies always want to see your stabilization fund growing. Several years ago, when we sold the Forbes Hill property, the discussion at the time and the commitment that was made at the town meeting was that we would transfer $4 million of that sale into stabilization funds, $2 million into our override stabilization, which we did last year, and $2 million into the regular stabilization fund, if you will, which we are doing this year. There is a bit of a workaround, we have to do it. It's actually $2 million of free cash going into stabilization, and instead, we're going to use $2 million to offset some capital expenses, but that's just the way the state has this workaround, the sale of property proceeds and what we're able to do. So this will be $2 million going into the general stabilization fund. We can cycle back to these dependent on those questions at the end. Article Three would be a $1 million appropriation into the compensated absences fund. Last year at town meeting, the town established a compensated absences fund, which is what pays for vacation and sick time at somebody's separation. And previously, it would either come out of the school budget on the school side or on the town side. Some of you remember, we'd have to go to town meeting in May and move $1,800 from the clerk's office, and $1,500 from the DPW, and $2,000 from the fire department to pay vacation upon separation, which is legally required in Massachusetts. The town established a fund and began a budget line. The goal would be to eventually take this liability and have enough cash to offset the liability. Again, helps with our credit rating, it helps with rating agencies, which impacts our borrowing. We are AA+. We want to stay AA+. We would certainly like to be AAA, but at the end of the day, we still have to show progress to even maintain the credit rating where we are. So given that the number of free, the free cash number is high this year, it was felt appropriate that we should do an additional $1 million deposit into the fund. The way it works is that we have a budget line for compensated absences, town and school, now that the schools have joined in with us on this. When that budget line gets exceeded every year, because it doesn't match the amount, money gets drawn down out of the fund. When that budget line is underspent, that money gets deposited into the fund. It's the same way that we handle workers' comp and unemployment, although those are on a much smaller scale than the total liability that we have here. So $1 million deposit into the compensated absences fund. Questions? Madam Moderator.
How much free cash do we have?
The total amount came in at $29 million, which is a record high for us, and will not be seen again. I know I said that last year, but this year it really won't, unless I'm wrong, which I hope I am, and we get another half a billion dollar project in town this fiscal year. So I hope I'm wrong, but not on the horizon. Question over here?
What's the yearly average for spend on the compensated absences?
Four, quarter, four, 40,000 dollars a year?
Yeah, $450,000 a year.
On average, yeah.
And our total liabilities are 4.1 million, based on our financial reporting.
But we'd love to get close to that. We don't necessarily realistically need to get all the way there. That liability would only actually make its way into reality if every single town employee quit all of a sudden at once, which I can tell you, not having enough money in the bank for that would not be my personal concern if that happened. But the rating agencies want to show that you're addressing it, and are you 75% there? Are you 80% of the way there? And that budget line that we have, the goal is to slowly increase that over time to get to that average, and then we will have solved this problem forever in our financial statements, and we'll never have to go back and worry about it again. That's the goal. Article Four starts our capital plan. Some of these will go quickly as I go project by project. Again, just feel free to throw your hand up and raise, ask a question if you have one, and again, we will cycle back if you do have one. First item up on the capital plan is the, to finalize, the replacement of the wildlife fence at the airport. Believe it or not, deer strikes, deers hit planes. I know we'd like to think of driving down the road, and God forbid a deer hit your car. Deers will hit planes. This is replacing a 20-year-old fence along the length of the airport. This is a follow-up to a project we appropriated last year. The total cost of this project to us is about $180,000, and that's 5% of the project. The FAA is paying the remaining 95% of that project. So it's just replacing, I think the estimate mark, it's a mile, it's more than a mile of fence, right? Mark the airport manager here, so there he is. It's more than a mile of fence, right? So it's significant wildlife.
It's about 3, 3 and 1/2 miles of fence.
Unfortunately, a lot of fencing. Two pickup trucks for the facilities department. We fund a lot of our regular vehicles out of the capital operating budget that we have every year in May. We have not done that yet with facilities. We are looking to at some point do that with facilities, but this would fund replacement of two vehicles in the facilities department. They maintain about 15 vehicles in their fleet. We try to replace these vehicles for a pickup truck every seven to 10 years, depending on its use. Some of the facilities trucks can go a little bit longer, but once they start becoming unreliable, it delays our response for the facilities department. Question, yep?
So the budget book that was published in May
Yep.
described expenditures of about $160 million of the fund.
Yep.
Any of this included in that?
None of this is, no. This is all separate, that's why it's coming to the November town meeting.
So our expenditures, more realistically, $174 million.
If you want to include capital, yes. We used to do capital at town meeting in May, but capital is not funded out of the operating budget, so again, that budget might be $160 million, and then there's additional appropriations outside of the operating budget, capital or other projects that we happen to do.
So where do you show balancing the budget?
So in that budget document, that is our operating budget, that you'll get in May, and our operating expenses and revenues are in there. That's what the balanced budget is, that's what we need to operate. I don't want to say we don't need to do any capital, but in theory, capital is a separate decision every year based on whether or not we have the funding to actually do it. Some towns have enough money built in in their budget to cover all of their capital needs, and it's just a discussion. We certainly do not, and probably will never actually get there.
But let's say the fire truck, $1.3 million, right? It's being requested.
Yes.
If it's not shown in the budget in May, that money's going to come out somewhere.
Correct.
Where does it come from?
Out of free cash, surplus revenue.
Or borrowing.
Or borrowing, yes, at the end point, if we're borrowing money. Is there a question online?
Jerry, how about?
Go ahead, Jerry.
I was wondering why we have to spend over $80,000 for a pickup truck?
If you've bought a fully equipped pickup truck lately, that's what you're likely to be looking at for the cost.
And actually, I did look at those costs previously. I don't think it's $80,000. It could be, you know, 40 to 50 maybe, but that's just a really unique feature here. I'm not seeing $80,000.
So if you want, Jerry, come by the office. We'll go through the state bid list and show you what the state goes out competitively for contracts. We have to go out to bid for all the equipment that we get. This is the, this is the price for replacing a work pickup truck. Now, that's all in, we don't just go for the base truck. This includes, for instance, if it's the electrician's truck, there's some equipment that goes along with the electrician's truck. They have to get lights installed in the truck as well.
All right, I'll do that.
All right. Other questions on facility vehicles? Parking lot at the Savage Center. We have been systematically going over the last few years through all of our different parking lots and replacing our parking lots. We've done some of the downtown lots, we've done a couple of school lots. Up this year, two projects, one B&amp;B parking lot at the Savage Center, which you can see is quite old and is probably more patched than lot, was deferred from last year. We were looking at the capital plan last year, and sometimes things get jumbled based on the amount of money that everyone feels comfortable spending in one given year. And while the parking lots do need to get done, some of these haven't been done since they were originally installed. They're generally a project you could move around if you had to. At this point, if you use the Savage lot, you know it's really barely a functioning lot. One of the benefits of redoing it, we'll be able to have probably berm around the center as opposed to right now, everything just kind of runs off and runs around. When you see those giant little sand piles in a parking lot, that's an indication that there's a problem with drainage in the parking lot, that water is just pooling in random places, that water freezes in the winter too, which can create an issue. This particular site, we did the senior center, half of the building, it's probably more closer to a third of the lot. Four years ago, I think, that portion of the lot was worse, so we kind of bifurcated it, did that portion, now we're completing the rest of the Savage Center. The apparatus floor construction or reconstruction for the public safety building. So the apparatus floor is right in the main fire bay, that is where all of our ambulances and fire trucks sit in the bay. It's not just a, it sounds strange when I say it's not just a floor, but there's a complicated system under it that treats any runoff or any chemicals that come from the equipment, and it's rated to hold the weight of our equipment. So when you think of all of our engines and ambulances sitting right there on that bay, the structure underneath the floor occasionally is going to need work. The fire station is hitting 20 years old. New fire stations, full size, are 40, 50, 60 million dollar projects, so our 20-year-old brand-new fire station is going to be with us for a while, so now's the time to start to make some of these facility improvements to make sure that we can continue to have the fire station for the foreseeable future. Questions on the apparatus floor?
Yes, we have one.
Doc Doris Love. Go ahead, Doris.
Right, if I'm not mistaken, I thought that this apparatus floor was already voted on at a, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but I specifically remember this because it was kind of a unique story of how it worked. And is this addition to what we already voted on, the extra work, or is this for the floor itself?
No, that's a great question. What we voted on last year was the engineering and design money to look at the floor and to have a firm come in and do some test borings, some drilling, drillings, and some LiDAR to look at the floor and see what needed to get done. This is the actual work. We try to do our study or our design, and then follow up the following year with the work.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely. In the past, we would sometimes try to just get a project done at one shot and say, "Well, let's get the engineering, the design done, and we think it's a half a million dollars, we think it's $800,000, we're not sure." We've moved away from that, because really, we should be doing, design bid build is really the process in most public agencies and a lot of private agencies, where we need to know what we're getting into. I like to describe us as, you know, probably a solidly middle-class town, but we don't know that we're always going to have money available, and the size and scope of a project changing is going to rearrange other projects for us. So this apparatus floor was an example of, maybe it only needs $60,000 worth of work, maybe it means a half a million dollars, maybe somebody comes in and tells us that there's a problem with the foundation of the building, and by the time we're done with this, it's $2 million. Well, if this was a $2 million project, we were going to be rearranging other projects in the plan. We don't quite have the money to always just say, "Hey, let's just get the project done and throw extra money on and call it a day." So we have to try to be strategic about knowing what we're getting into, rather than having to kick something else out of the plan that might end up having a higher priority. Next is a new fire engine. We did make an adjustment, I should say a replacement of a fire engine. It is a new truck, we're not adding to the fleet, we're replacing a vehicle. We did make a swap in the plan from an ambulance to an engine. Part of the reason for that is we got two ambulances in just last year, they were close to a year later than we wanted them. At one point, we were promised floor models in April of last year, April of the prior year, that showed up November, December. The lead time on a fire engine is about 18 months now. The lead time on a ladder truck is about three years, so we may be coming back to town meeting at some point in the next year saying, "We've got to look at what we need in the next five to seven years and figure out how to get an appropriation now, because if we need to replace this vehicle next year, we're 18 months away from that appropriation." So given how long it's been taking, we swapped the engine and the ambulance. Engines are always built sort of custom. The replacement will follow the two engines we've bought in the last six or seven years, and it's almost the exact same model. Prior to that, we sort of picked whatever we were looking at in a given year that looked good, but we have been standardizing the fleet of engines, so it'll take us another five or six years, but then we will have a ladder truck and three to four engines that are roughly the same model, which is great for training, stability, parts ordering, and just general use. Any question?
Yeah, is there a trade-in on these?
You sometimes get something for it. Oftentimes, if you can get scrap for it, you'll be happy that you can get that. The problem is, the market for used fire engines is usually volunteer and rural departments in the middle of nowhere. Apparently, some many years ago, I don't know who in the room would remember, we apparently gave an engine to Argentina, and somehow it got shipped all, what's that?
It was our ladder truck.
It was our ladder truck, so I don't think we made any money off that. I can only imagine what shipping a ladder truck to Argentina is, but it's minimal. If you can get scrap for them, you're happy. Sometimes a rural or a volunteer department will pay something for it, but if you're running it as hard as we run them, and you're getting a truck to the end of its life cycle, the problem is, you could look at 20, 30, 40,000 dollar repairs. I think, Chief, the ladder just had the, not the alternator, but the
Transmission.
Transmission, what, it came at 23?
21,000.
$21,000 to replace the transmission. So you could inside a year see $100,000 worth of repairs on a large engine. Ms. Slater?
Just quickly, Tony, on engines, don't, rather than, you know, trade them in or get rid of them, don't you sometimes keep them in reserve in case one of your regular units goes down, at least you have something to put in interim?
We always keep a reserve. If we got a good offer on it, and our reserves were in good shape, that would be, that would be one thing. We always have to keep a backup. The region, I don't want to say the region shares a backup ladder truck, we borrow all the whole ladder truck, which is what a lot of area towns do, so we, equipment is shared as much as possible, but even then, your backup engine, if you're not cycling it through, you've got to bring it back up, and then it breaks down, and it just never, never pleasant. And unfortunately, fire engines generally need to work when we need them to work. Any question in the back?
Tony, just to clarify, the 1.3 million is a fully loaded vehicle? It's not, we won't be facing additional expenses to load it with equipment?
Correct, that is all in. Several years ago, we moved into making sure our capital purchases were all-in purchases. What some towns will do is they'll, you know, to Mr. Hawke's point, they'll say, "I just need 45 grand for the truck, that's all we need." And then they're robbing their operating budget to equip it, or they come back, they ask for a reserve fund transfer. We may have done that years ago, we have stopped that. That's everything for the truck. A fire engine probably has $100,000 plus worth of equipment on it. We make sure we include that all with the purchase, so this is the all-in price. Now, certainly, once we go out to bid and we get quotes, could that price change? That's always a possibility for any project, but we spec out all of the equipment we need. We do the same thing with our police cruisers. We don't just buy the bare minimum model and then search around looking for money. If we know that the real cost of that cruiser is $70,000 because of all the junk that's in it, that's what we're getting for the cruiser. We're doing the same thing with the engine, we do the same thing with our ambulances, so we're not, again, buying an ambulance for 400 grand, and then getting the stretcher after that, and then getting this piece of equipment after that, and then getting something else and all these other stuff. So it's the all-in cost. All right, year five of our road repair project. We began a project five years ago to get all of our roads up to what a road rating condition index of, or PCI of about a B, which is where we would want to be. This is the fifth year of that project, $2.8 million. This will get our roads up to where we want to be. We're going to have to maintain that, so this is not the last road project you're ever going to see, but we've spent five years catching up, and I think you can see the benefit of that in the roads in town. This gets us to a point where we're in a good place, so it's one more hectic year of construction in town, and then it'll slow down a little, little bit, but then we've got to make sure we're committed to maintaining our roads in good condition. Questions on year five of the road, Mr. Donnelly?
You just might want to explain to me that town meeting, that $2.8 million is going to be in two motions, correct?
That is correct. It will be $2 million coming out of the Forbes proceeds. That's how we're just able to use the Forbes money to pay for capital, and then free cash that we would otherwise use for capital goes into the stabilization account. Sounds like we're just shifting money around, but the state has told us we are to do it this way if we want to achieve that. The other $800,000 will be from free cash. We started this plan, this program, deciding that we were going to borrow each year for the increments. Last year, that when we realized we had a good free cash number, we said for roads, it's better to pay cash for, and we did that last year, we're able to do that this year. There won't be a year six of the program. I know that the Board of Selectmen has indicated they want to look at sidewalks. This program, sometimes you see a road done and not the sidewalk done. Part of the reason is, this program and this expenditure were designed around roads. It was getting our roads into a certain condition, that's where we need to be, and that's where we need to go. Sidewalks are important, they are very expensive. I think Prospect Street, if we were to do the sidewalks all down Prospect Street, mark the estimate was just under a million bucks. So if, when you look at this, plus money we get from the state in a small allocation in the budget, that would be, in a normal year, that would be 2/3 of our road money. What we're going to likely need to do going forward, between money we get from the state and small amount of money in our budget, make sure we're trying to increase and not decrease that amount from the budget every year, and then every five to seven years, we're probably going to have to have a capital project for one of the longer roads in town. So Washington Street, the whole corridor, probably realistically needs to get done every 10 years, whereas a well-maintained sort of subdivision street can go 30 years without needing to get done. Washington Street gets beat up, it's heavily trafficked, there's a lot of cars that go on it, it has to get dug up a lot. The problem is, if we do that whole corridor and we just take it out of our budget, you're probably tying up two or three, if not four, years of all of our road money, so that's four years that we can't do any other roads in town. And then if you pick two or three of the busiest roads in town, what you're looking at in a 15 or 20-year period is, we're only getting roads done every third year, maybe every fourth year. Washington Street's several years out, so we won't have to worry about it for a little bit, but we're going to have to decide how to handle some of those larger road projects that would otherwise eat up three, four, or five years of our road money. Questions on the year five of the road repair program? Washington Street at Hawes Brook Bridge Rehabilitation. This project was actually kicked from last year to this year, given the amount of construction that's going on in the area. This is the bridge right across from Hawes Pool, right in front of Brookside, or right adjacent to Brookside. It is in need of serious repair. We've been good about getting, our bridge is taken care of. It's an $850,000 free cash appropriation. The pictures don't really show it justice, but if you look at the, just because of the lighting, you can see the bridge is starting to fade, it's not a complete replacement of the bridge. It was kicked last year because between the middle school and Hawes Pool, there's just a lot going on right down there. By getting this appropriation now, by the time it goes through design and full design and bidding and everything else, we're not looking at construction until next year anyway, which is why sometimes we get a project approved in October, November, and everyone's like, "Well, great, when are you starting the bridge?" It's a ways out, and it takes some time for it to happen, but we didn't want, we wanted at least Hawes Pool to be finished before we also started the bridge. Is that a question online at first? Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Tony. In the scope of this project, is there anything there for raising the height of the bridge?
No, not, Mark, this is the bridge over at Brook.
You know, high water table with heavy water drainage.
Yeah, I don't think Hawes Brook, it's not being raised at all, no. There's no need for it. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that, Mark doesn't think it
I don't know, it's probably worth adding into the scope, honestly.
Yeah, but Ed, I don't know how you raise that bridge without fundamentally altering the whole road and talking about a sort of mega project. I don't know that we've had flooding over that bridge in the last couple of years, just a recent memory, but Mark, do you?
It's not an impediment to the Hawes Brook flow. It does not have to be raised.
Other questions on the Hawes Brook Bridge? Next is a sewer project, a sewer, oh, is that a question? Oh, Alex. Alex, go ahead.
Hi, Alex, this is a, the conservation commission said that it's still active.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alex, we can't, we can't hear you.
That's the other question, I moved to the speaker. I just wanted to add that the Conservation Commission did permit the Washington Street Bridge to evaluate its compliance with the street process standards to make sure that it was able to convey flow as effectively as possible, given, given any constraints in the area.
Great, thank you. Sewer INI project, INI's inflow and infiltration. This would be a mapping of our sewer system, 75% paid for by the MWRA. So what that is, is a, realistically, a little camera goes through and looks at our entire sewer system and sees what is getting into the sewer system that shouldn't be getting into the sewer system. Now, what might that be? Roots and other biological growth tends to damage sewer pipes, and water gets in, and it's mainly water sediment can get in and cause clogs and breaks and stuff, that can happen as well. But where water flows into a sewer pipe, we pay for every gallon of water we purchase, and we pay for every gallon of sewer we flush. So I always try to tell people, it's a little bit more complicated than this, but picture a big meter as you enter the town, and a big meter as it goes out of the town, and we're paying for it. Now, somebody dumping, mind you, the storm drain is your storm sewer, that's not your sanitary sewer. A little bit of water getting in is not a big deal, but if you have an area that's fairly wet, and there's a sewer pipe that runs under it, and there's a crack in it, you're talking about thousands and thousands of gallons that can leak into the sewer system, and we end up having to pay for that treatment. So we will end up cammering the whole system, and from there, we'll be able to know where we're seeing significant inflow and infiltration, and identify repairs that need to be made, maybe large and comprehensive. In some areas, it may be as small as, "Hey, we've seen some trickling, we've seen some water flowing in this area, we have to go ahead and fix it and stop some flow." I think, Mark, we did the airport a couple of years ago, the pipe that went through, that was leaking, we think it was a couple million gallons a year, right?
Oh, easily, yeah. During, you know, the springtime and the water table came up and significantly, yeah.
So we're likely, once we have that list, look at the major property, major problem areas and work way, work our way down from there. A small crack where a little water is dripping in on a small residential street is not likely to be a problem versus, "Hey, we've got either an illegal connection, or we've got a huge amount of water flowing in from damage to the system somewhere."
I'm just curious, where does the camera access the sewer?
Pop up the sewer cap, they put the little thing in, and it drives through. The, the thing, if you will, the grate on your side of your road, that's storm water, but the sewer system still has access points on every street, or roughly every street. Mark, have we done a comprehensive INI recently?
Well, we've done a lot of lining of sewer pipes for pollution control. We haven't done an INI study for a while, so it's, it's time to do this. Because there's a lot of water, that's clean water going into the sewer system that we're paying for, so this project will identify that and rectify that.
And illegal connections to the sewer system are possible, they're not legal, but over time, things happen, people have connected a storm drain into the sanitary sewer, and things do happen. Yeah?
Yeah, I put an irrigation system in this fall, and I just got my bill, which, you know, but it was mainly the sewer.
So, did you get a second meter, or separate meter?
I don't think so.
So, if you have an irrigation system, you can get a separate meter, where we won't charge the sewer on that portion of it, because we know it's not going into the sewer, but then your, your regular bill does get an adjustment. Because the way we bill sewer, we don't really meter the sewer flow, it's estimated at a percentage of the water flow.
Yeah, because it's mostly sewer.
But we can, if you let us know, we can run the analysis, some people look at it and it just doesn't make sense financially, it may not make sense, for some people it does, and that's why they do it, but for some people it doesn't, just doesn't work out, it's, you know, this bill goes down $50, this one goes up $50, you're really saving it, but we can help you do the analysis. Other questions on INI? Traffic study for Washington and Mylod. This intersection has not had a comprehensive traffic study done in probably ever, if not many years. For us to make any changes to a traffic pattern, if we were going to add something like a light, we were required to do a third-party traffic study. Otherwise, the MassDOT does not let us do significant changes or modifications to an intersection in town. So this is a third-party study, they'll look at the peak traffic period, which should actually be when the middle school opens, they'll look at some off-peak periods prior to that to get an idea of the delta, but if we were to do it into this intersection, we have to study it before MassDOT would allow us to put a light in. Not that we're going to, but you have to do the traffic study, get the counts, and see what's needed. Also, same thing, if there was a, to be a redesign of the intersection, I don't think it would be substantial, MassDOT requires a study, we're going to do anything regarding this intersection. The traffic flow in that end of town has increased, as you know, you're kind of coming in from Wallpole, Wallpole is growing, there's a lot more growth in Wallpole, people are, we know from our own traffic counts, it's increasing, all the growth in that area, that part of town, it's increasing, so this is just a look at Mylod Street. And again, if we were to, to sort of do it on our own, and we think a light is warranted, and I'm not saying that it is, MassDOT requires us to be able to make any major traffic modifications. Henry?
How long does the study last?
By last, you mean like, how long is it good for?
Oh, how long does it take them to do the study?
Mark, once they start, a couple months?
Yeah, tops.
If it's $100,000, I'm wondering what you're paying for it.
Yeah, so it, it's a couple months' worth of traffic studies and then analysis, and they're doing traffic counts, and it has to be a third-party study. We can't just throw a little clicker out there and tell the state, "Yeah, it's, it's $70,000 a day, let's put, you know, let's put a traffic light up there." Question? Go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. You, I think, answered part of my question, I was thinking about, all of this, the traffic study is going to happen after the new middle school is open?
Yeah, so when we, sorry, go ahead. When we do, generally when you do a traffic study, you need to know what your peak volume is, and your peak volume is going to be in the fall when the middle school is open, that's when the traffic's likely going to be its highest throughout those days. Whereas in the summer, we know, not only is summer never a peak period, at least for us, I'm sure it is down the cape or down the vineyard or something like that, you're going to want to know the difference, but you need to know what the traffic is at its busiest, and that's going to be when we have a school up and running in session with an additional grade, as well as sort of the regular ebb and flow of the workday.
And then, in addition to traffic volume, is it going to also look at kind of traffic flow and layout? I, I'm on this intersection multiple times a day, every day I live on Mylod Street, and I have always found it very difficult, if you're pulling left onto Washington from Mylod, to go into town. If anything highest, that the sedan is parked on kind of the Wallpole backside, is it possible to see traffic? Is that going to be a fully traffic study?
Absolutely, it's not just traffic counts, and I'm sorry if I made it think that it was just the number of traffic counts. They'll look at the traffic flow, and so they'll say, "All right, on average, there's 27 people an hour turning left, what can be done about that? Is it a problem, is it not a problem? What can be done to improve sightlines? Do you add a lane, do you cut a lane, do you add a left turn only lane?" They go through all different analyses to see what the problem is and what could be done to make it, make it better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Henry? Okay, let me go to one person, then I'll drop online.
I was just going to ask, do they tell you the difference between traffic with cars and trucks? Because it seems to be a huge, I live in that side, there's a huge increase in big truck traffic all around that area.
You know, they don't generally, but I, it would factor into the overall traffic count. We can do our own study to try and look at what's truck traffic, but you realistically can't restrict truck traffic, as difficult as it is, as much of a pain in the butt as it is.
This is one of the reasons why maybe the bridges and stuff aren't lasting as long, because you got, I've lived there for 40 years, and the truck traffic is tremendous now compared to what it was even 10 years ago.
Sure. That being said, what was, what year was the Hawes Brook Bridge in? Mark?
When it was constructed?
Yeah. 30?
No, I think it was the 50s.
50, so, we're getting 70 years out of a bridge, that's pretty, pretty good. But it's, that part of town is a lot easier than it used to be, there's a lot more traffic, so we have to look at it. Two questions, Ed and then Frank. Okay, Ed and then Frank.
Hey Tony, thanks. I have to ask this, is the study going to look at this, and if they find a need, just default automatically to a traffic signal?
So would they just say?
Reason I ask this is, reason I ask this is because, you know, we're putting the traffic signal on Upland right now, next to the bridge, and traffic signals are not very efficient when it comes to traffic, in general.
It's not going to automatically default to a traffic signal, I'm not a, I'm not a transportation engineer, but there might, there might be a light on Mylod Street, if that's where the problem is with traffic, that it would be tied to coming out of Mylod Street, but that's just my speculation, looking at the, at the outset. Any intersection design or any traffic signalization design is always designed to flow the most cars through the most important route. So we have this problem with Manhattan Street where some folks can't get down Lenox Street, and they complain about it, they say, "Hey, I don't have enough time." Well, Lenox Street might be 2,000 cars a day and Manhattan is 20, so it's designed to make sure that the maximum amount of traffic is flowing. You might actually find, and I know Rachel may not want to hear this, but the people turning from Mylod Street might actually be causing more traffic, and it may make sense to stack them up and let it go at once. That's just speculation, I haven't, you can't say that, this is what's going to come up.
So you need to look at town of Amherst.
Yeah.
That I've been out and, you know, participating in that for the past 12 years. Every intersection that they have, they have defaulted to a mini rotary as opposed to a traffic light. For the simple reason that you don't have to worry about a traffic light regulating flow, because flow is regulated naturally within the rotary itself, and there's no extra cost, it's significantly less expensive.
So that's, I, I agree that traffic rotaries are great, we are putting one at the end of Prospect Street, after, for years, I don't know what you would call it, Mark, a half, it wasn't really a rotary, it was just a complicated, a half-stop.
So on this point, MassDOT's going to want you to look at a roundabout or a rotary?
Right, I don't know that one.
As first case? You're not going to have the area there to make it, but they want you to look at it first? If you have the area, they want you to?
Actually, Mark, I would just agree with that, and I suggest you look at what Amherst has done. When I say micro rotary, I mean micro rotary. It would fit perfectly within the intersection of these two streets.
That part of the state has a lot of smaller rotaries, and they'll, they'll, they will absolutely look at it as part of it. I think what Mark's concerned is because?
But that town has twice our population and double our amount of vehicle traffic.
I don't know that that's accurate, Ed, not to get into a debate over Amherst, their population is between 30 and 35,000, and there's about 40,000 kids at the university. Our census population is 31,000, but our daytime population is between 60 and 70,000. We're also only on 10 square miles, so our traffic makeup is going to be fundamentally different. I've lived in the borough.
Amherst is 60,000 people when in session, and they have 40,000 cars on campus. You include that with the town, they're coming up to about 85,000 people with close to 70,000 cars and trucks in motion every day.
Sure. I can tell you, the Route 1 traffic count is about 50,000 cars a day, and that's just Route 1 in the city. So, certainly the study's going to look at that option, I think Mark's concern is to make that happen even there, you would either be eliminating a park, wetlands, or taking a couple of homes. And in terms of the cost, if you have to take a home, that means we're taking your home and there are your value for it.
No, we're not talking about the same thing. I strongly recommend you look at what they've done, because the rotaries fit within single and double lane, most of them are single, you know, which is what you're looking at here, you're looking at two-way traffic in lane each way, so.
Again, that's the, that's why we have to do a study, because DOT makes you review all of those options. I think that's was Frank?
Hi Tony, I'm a little bit off the point here, but pardon my ignorance, as someone who lives close to the intersection of Dean and Napontet, what is the procedure for determining what warrants a traffic study?
So it's, it's complicated as to what warrants it. Dean and Napontet, Mark, we've looked at that a couple of times before, correct?
We have.
Yeah, and it's, the, the traffic counts that we've done in the previous studies have never warranted any action, so I don't think Mylod Street's been looked at in a couple of decades, and there's a lot of growth going on in the area and a lot of change going on in that particular area. If we were to look at Dean and Napontet again, every time we look at it, it just comes back with, there's nothing that DOT would let us actually change.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely, not off topic, great, great question. Joe Bradley?
Thank you. One very informal observation is that since the bridge is down at Morrison and Short, that there is definitely a lot more in that, it might be some other people's observations. The truck traffic especially has been, has increased, because there's no height restriction anymore, so it's, you know, that's, that's a green light for the trucks. So if we do a?
I'm just not hitting it, but fair point.
Preferably not hitting it. But if we do a traffic study, and that's kind of a, that's a, hopefully a temporary situation, then we're going to be counting more trucks and more vehicles, because that road is not restricted, so does that give it a play at all?
It will, truthfully, even if there's increased truck traffic with the bridge being down, and probably some people hope the bridge stays down, I don't think you're going to impact the overall traffic count. And as an example, I think the Hatton Street's traffic count is 17,000 per day, so how many trucks are going there? Now, if you told me that, the traffic count, I don't know what it is for Mylod Street, I don't know if people look at it or that intersection, if you were to tell me it's 15,000 cars a day, or 2,000 trucks a day going down that street, I don't think that is enough that it would necessarily impact it. Maybe we don't need to do anything at all, because without the bridge there, we're not having traffic hit that bridge, we're backing it up throughout four towns, but remains to be seen. But that's why you, we talk about a comprehensive traffic study, that, it's looking at all the factors, where it's coming, where it's going from, what the rate of traffic is, when it's high, when it's low, to decide what would work, and then you go through your different models, would this work, would that work? You know, we're not going to be able to add a lane, for instance, without, you know, something like that, not that adding lanes ever actually addresses traffic, but as an example, that would likely quickly be ruled out as, well, you can't really widen the road. Other questions on the Washington Mylod traffic study? Next up is a DPW vehicle replacement, salt truck number six, a 2009 vehicle, $330,000. We fund most of the DPWs' regular vehicles through their operating budget, those are just their trucks that they churn a few, a year to maintain the fleet, and then the larger capital items come through capital out of way, like a salt truck. Questions on the salt truck, consulting operations? Moving right on. Water improvement program, year five of 10. This is a program we began five years ago to start lining our water pipes. There are actually two appropriations, one is a zero-interest loan. This is the fifth year of the program, what we effect, what we essentially do is go in, we take a water pipe that your water flows through, the very water that you drink, and it even gets replaced entirely if it needs to, or more likely, it's getting lined with a new concrete liner. So, right here on the left, and I know the lights are making it a little tough to see, but it's in the packet, this came from Walnut Street just earlier in this year, so you can see all that sediment and buildup, is, we call it tuberculation, that's what the water was flowing through on Walnut Street. This is what it looks like afterwards. Perfectly healthy to drink, but it creates a number of problems. One, it can impact the taste, two, it can impact the color, three, it severely impacts fire flows, and that's an important factor we don't talk about enough, we talk about lining our water pipes. Imagine, God forbid, there's a fire, the chief has to hook up to a hydrant, the water can flow through here, or it can flow through here. So it's year five of a 10-year program. This is an example, similar to the road project, where given our financial realities, we tend to chunk projects up into pieces, because it's a lot to try to take on everything all at once. There's a reality of how much construction we can handle at any given time, that factors into it, but we try to build in some pauses occasionally to make sure if something else comes up, we can make a, make a course correction if necessary. Go ahead.
So the cleaning removes the sediment?
Correct.
But in the, in the future, sediment could come back in?
No, that's what the line does. So it's the line, you're lining. It's a concrete liner as opposed to cast iron, and the tuberculation won't build on the concrete.
So it breaks the bond between the metals that are in the water and the cast iron, so it doesn't attract?
Okay, thank you. Other questions on the water lining, cleaning lining? This is a follow-up, it's the same project, we just are able to get $630,000 every year from MWRA, or the Mass Water Resources Authority, who provides us all of our water from the Quabon, and who treats all of our sewer out of Deer Island. We're able to chunk off, instead of having $5 million, we can do a little bit less and get a zero-interest loan for 10 years from the MWRA. So I think we're probably approaching the 10th of these, we've done them for years, where the net impact on the budget is actually pretty minimal, as one falls off, and then we just add another one with about a $5,000 differential. So it's all the same project and the same appropriation, we just need two separate motions, because one of them is for the zero-interest loan. That's the maximum the MWRA allows us to do, believe me, if we could do the whole thing zero-interest, we would do it in a heartbeat. But again, we decided to go with separate pitchers here, just because we have the opportunity to. This came from Over Road earlier today, and again, it's the same pitcher, I think, of what it's being replaced with, but this is what the water frame within Over Road was flowing through, and the picture on the right is what it'll look like, or what it looks like now, actually. The Savage Center and Ivy's tennis courts, $800,000 for replacing both of these tennis courts. We did some resurfacing on one of them in 2015, both of them are quite old, if you've used them, they have reached the end of their life cycle. This was originally two separate projects, we decided to combine it into one project to get both of them done, they'll physically get done at different times, but to make sure we could have one contractor, one series of materials, and, you know, make any decisions sort of comprehensively, rather than doing one and then waiting a year, doing the next one. Questions on the tennis courts? All right, school minibus replacement, this will replace the school?
Frank.
Frank, go ahead.
Do I remember a couple years ago, somebody mentioning that the tennis courts maybe weren't aligned properly with the sun or something?
That's actually at the high school, where they're not, they're apparently not aligned correctly. So these, these are just at the Savage Center and the Cooley. School replacement of five minibus, the school runs their own, we run our own special transportation, special education, education fleet. These five minibus were purchased roughly all at the same time, our preference would be to replace them over time and build that into a budget, as we do with some of the other smaller vans. Unfortunately, this chunk was purchased as ones, and once you make, as, sort of all at once, once you make that decision, you are sort of stuck going along with that decision. Otherwise, you'd be buying one this year and hoping that the older vehicles continue to last well beyond their lifespan. So, this likely won't need to come back for another 10 or 15 years, we at some point might be able to make that budgetary adjustment, but about five years before they need to be replaced is when you need to start replacing them, and then again, you're carrying a larger inventory for a short period of time. Question, Henry, go ahead.
What's the saving in those buses?
These, well, I think they're the 16? They're, we run the small, small vans that are literally not much more than a sedan. These are a little bit bigger, these are your, your traditional show-up buses, I guess you'd say. Was there a question online, or? No. All right. Moving on, these are just some of the capital items, somebody mentioned earlier, I think Bob said that there are some items that you see in the operating budget that are capital items. This is that list here, as well as some things that come from grants, so we try to present everything together so everyone knows there are some items in the operating budget. They are capital, but we really treat them as rolling stock, and the example I use is police cruisers. We have built into the budget the cost of replacement of police cruisers, because we know we have to replace a certain number of police cruisers every year. An individual vehicle is not a significant expense, and you could argue that an individual vehicle may not even really be a capital expense, and you could argue that that's true, except for, we probably purchase a million dollars of vehicles a year, excluding large equipment at the fire station. So our investment in our fleet is significant, and some of that has to be regular recurring replacement. We tend to put vehicles that are larger, or a department that maybe doesn't have a regular replacement schedule, so the rec department as an example, they have two vehicles, so we're not going to build into the budget a vehicle for recreation, because it's going to be twice every 10 to 15 years that we replace a rec vehicle. But other vehicles, we try to replace on a regular budget, as we try to build into the operating budget, costs we know we are going to have every year. All right, funding sources for the capital plan, you can see them up there, we're looking at $6 million in free cash, $2 million from the Forbes Estate, and then the remainder is water, water rates borrowing, or will be a borrowing that gets charged against the water rates. Questions on the capital plan financing piece? Yeah?
What is the profit level of the amount in, pre-cash, the new amount? How do you gauge that? If it's $5 million, you probably would be very nervous, right?
Yes. So, here's the challenge, this year, because we had some, we had high interest earnings This year, because we had some, we had high interest earnings last year, significant amount, we did, how, how much did we do in interest? Seven million in interest. Five, six years ago, we did about $50,000 in interest. Now, that's a combination of two things. That's the, we borrowed for the middle school all at once, so we made some money off that, candidly. It's not arbitrage, but we made some money off that, and just general market rates, where we're able to see a lot of money. That's coming down considerably. We also did a significant amount of building permits last year. We did $12 million in building permits, just between FM Global and the hospital alone. We will not see that again. So, last year, we had a record-high number of either 12 or 14 million. This year, we're at 29 million. It will not be that next year, and again, I hope I'm wrong, but it won't be. Prior to that, our average year, four to five million dollars. So, we would probably be borrowing for some of these projects if we didn't have as large of a cash value that we have, because you need to keep some of your cash on hand to be able to use. You can draw down your stabilization fund. Rating agencies don't like that, and they especially don't like it if it's something that's not necessary. So, we just want to build an extra park next year. We see it's a really cool idea. Let's take $400,000 out of stabilization. That'll probably cost you more in interest when your credit rating goes down, because that's a bad financial decision. I also want to caution, when it comes to free cash, we're, we're fine this year. There's a good amount this year. How much we borrow versus what we pay cash is always going to depend on where we are in our operating budget, how much cash we have. We also need to always keep some free cash, and we are keeping plenty for snow and ice. Some of you who have been Town Meeting members for less than five years have probably never seen us actually have to fund snow and ice, but it's the one item you're allowed to deficit spend on in Massachusetts, because candidly, in the middle of February, if we run out of money, we can't stop plowing the roads. The money we have budgeted for snow and ice was adjusted at the last override, based on an average expenditure minus the 2015 winter of five years prior to the override, and we have had some very warm winters. So, I'm a little scared, if we had a bad winter, what that snow and ice number would actually be, because it's hard to track, and it's hard to allocate resources and say, "Well, let's, let's go up $80,000." Well, what did we spend last year? 600 grand. Well, we should go to 980 instead of 9. That doesn't work. So, I don't know that we're going to have a bad winter. We always need to keep some free cash until May to make sure we don't have a snow and ice deficit to cover. We haven't in years, but that's actually kind of rare. It's the same thing in the facilities budget, where we just have not had a really bad cold winter with a lot of breaks, with a lot of heating issues. So, I'm nervous what a bad winter would do to us, but we've had mild winters for five or six years.
Let me ask you differently.
Sure.
When does the yellow, or yellow caution light, or red, or red alarm light go off with regards to free cash amount? Because I have no, I have no idea whether $20 million in free cash is, is okay.
So, again, I would tell you, prior to the last two years, we averaged four to five million dollars a year. So, if you're dropping below a million dollars, you should probably be getting nervous. But I want to caution you that deciding to spend a million dollars on an additional project is different than a million dollars for snow and ice. If we have $2 million in free cash, we're going to do the bare minimum and spend the least amount of it. It doesn't mean we can spend a million dollars. I don't want you to think, "Hey, it's 29 million, we can spend 28 million." It's always about what are you actually spending it on? There's no absolute bottom level. If the economy collapses tomorrow, and we have to throw everything into the budget, you're going to spend everything and throw everything into the budget. Avoiding a disaster is different than, you know, we want to do a ice project. I mean, the chairs in this room are in good shape. If somebody said, "Let's spend $50,000 doing them," out of our last $1 million free cash? Ain't going to happen. So, there's no bottom-line number, but our historic average has been under $5 million total, where we spend two to three, maybe four million. Call it, going beyond 90% of what you have is not a good idea.
Okay, but based on what you just said, then, the $20 million seems fairly comfortable.
Yes, this year and this year along.
However, you have to project.
Correct.
Where we're going, right?
And, sorry, Cal, go ahead.
So, so it says our new free cash balance would be 20 million.
Correct.
What happens to that at the end of the fiscal year?
So, any money, so it, it transfers to the next year. You don't lose it.
Oh, it does.
Yes. Free cash, I always use the expression, it dies on June 30th. And what that means is free cash is money that we didn't spend from a prior year, or money above our projections that we took in. So, we project we're going to do a million dollars in building permits. We did $2 million in building permits. So, on June 30th, your books are sort of wiped clean, and then there's a new calculation done of what you had left in money you didn't spend, and that counts as money you didn't spend, as well as anything that was unexpended from the budget and revenues over projection. Where I say it dies on June 30th, and it's a new number, generally what you leave in free cash is going to be there, unless we had a bad year where we ended in the red. That usually doesn't happen, but if we had a revenue take a huge shortfall, that has to get made up somewhere, so that gets made up out of your surplus revenue. But we don't lose it, and we don't have to spend it either. So, we put some of it into this account, we put some into that account. You can leave $20 million there and do nothing with it. And in the next year, you'll reasonably have $20 million, unless you have a huge shortfall somewhere else.
And could some of that go into stabilization?
It is. We're actually transferring $2 million in stabilization.
But I'm talking about the two, the 20, 20 million that's left. Could we at some point move more of it into stabilization?
Absolutely. We could. It's not good to put money into stabilization if you think you're going to need it in the next year or two, because the rating agencies look like that. You've put money away, and you're taking it. If you think you're going to spend it, just leave it in free cash, and you have it available to be able to spend. Alan?
Thanks, Tony. And a question we just had about putting additional money into stabilization. There is going to be a group which is going to be getting together from the FinCom, the Selectmen, I believe, the school committee, as well as some town officials, to look at what's a reasonable number to put into a new stabilization account, namely, a capital stabilization account. Because when you have a windfall like this, you know, the people, you know, again, the money burns, it burns a hole in their pocket. We'd like to put some money away into a capital stabilization fund for different types of projects we have in the future, whether it's roofs, whether it's, you know, a ladder truck a couple of years down the road, whether it's the payoff of portion of Town Hall, when that has to be done several years down the road. So, rest assured, we're going to look at it. I mean, I have no idea, you know, what the recommendation is, or what the number will be, but I feel reasonably confident that when we come to Springtown Meeting, there'll be an article there to put an additional amount of money into, most likely, a new stabilization fund, namely, a capital stabilization fund.
Yeah.
And would the, the people who look at our money consider that as the same thing as our regular stabilization fund?
No, we're able to sort of differentiate it, where we, we would essentially be putting it, the mechanism is stabilization fund. We're putting money aside for future projects we're intending to draw it down. Anne?
Part of the reasoning behind this is that, you know, we have, hopefully, we would have enough money to balance our budget, but we may be, the, one of the first things that starts floating out the door is, and not being able to do, is the capital. It's, it's fixing or getting a new fire truck. It's all of those things that we really need, but they get pushed aside a little bit when you're doing your regular budget. So, you've got that regular budget, and, and to use the extra money for your capital is, is a good way to do this, so that you sort of have this little bank account on the side, so that you can get some of the capital projects done, even though it's a tough budget year.
Because when we delay certain capital projects, we're just kicking the can down the road. We don't do, as I always reminded, with this capital plan as an example, that very few of our plans are, or our projects are something new, or we're adding something, or we're doing something fun. It's a lot of boring fixing stuff we have that's reached the end of its life cycle. Bob?
Isn't there a difference in terms of approvals for money coming out of stabilization fund versus free cash?
Yep. Free cash requires just a simple majority. Pulling money out of stabilization is two-thirds, and borrowing is a two-thirds vote.
Oh, I thought free cash was at the discretion of the finance.
No. Town Meeting allocates free cash a simple majority. All right. Other questions on the capital plan finance piece? All right. Frank, the light on. Article five, creation of affordable veterans' housing at 20 Vernon Street. This project was originally on the warrant in May. They would allocate $800,000 from CPA funds to fund the creation of 20 affordable housing units for low-income veterans on Vernon Street. I do have the chair of the CPC and CPC staff here, who can also help answer any questions and may answer most of the questions as well. Catherine or Jordan, if you want to say anything, or do you want to just open up the questions?
I think just quickly.
Yeah.
Can I sit right here?
Come on up.
Come on down. I'll try and go as quickly as the town manager.
Introduce yourself to everyone.
I know, I sure will. My name is Catherine Walsh. I'm the interim chair of the CPC, and I'm joined by Joe Sheehan, Joe Greeley, John Hall on remotely, I don't know if anybody else is, and Kristen Phil, who is our community preservation project manager.
Also on the conservation commission.
Oh, yeah, I'm on the conservation.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, I appreciate it. So, just quickly, I wanted to give a background on what the CPC is all about and what funds are be, are able to be allocated towards. So, it was created by the Community Preservation Act, and the funds are specifically dedicated to open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. And so, there's an annual surcharge on real estate taxes and some money that comes in through the state, and that's allocated to our budget, and it's sitting in a separate funding bucket. And so, I want to be clear that the CPC does not recommend any projects. What we do is evaluate projects that are presented to us. There's a nine-member board that evaluates the projects for eligibility requirements and viability. And so, just by way of reference, we've received about $6.3 million since inception in 2016, and we've spent a little over, or close to $5 million. And so, this year, we're expecting to receive a little under $1 million in revenue for projects that are being considered. Next slide, please. So, just, just by way of background, I think the town manager indicated we're looking at 20 studio apartments restricted to low-income veterans. The CPC is recommending that 600 of the 800 come from our unrestricted fund, and 200 come from the community housing fund. So, the full cost of the development is a little over 5.5 million, and the town will be providing 800,000 of that. One of the great things about this and our partnership with Caritas is they've partnered with ClearPAP, who's going to be providing 24/7 wraparound services for the residents of this facility. And another important fact is all of these residences, or these units, will count to our affordable housing stock. So, in general, we are getting 20 units for $800,000, so that equates to about $40,000 a unit. And if you compare that with the state inventory of affordable housing, the average cost is about $600,000. Next slide, please. So, one of the things that we realized is that this was a very complicated project, and there were numbers of boards and committees that were very interested in this. And so, we went back to the drawing board. We met with Caritas, we had a number of public meetings, they had meetings with CPC. We went on a site visit, or some of the community preservation committee folks went on a site visit. And I think it's also really important to note that Caritas is a totally reputable affordable housing partner here. They have over 30 similar units in the metro Boston area, and so, they are well-versed at providing these types of services and running these types of facilities. And again, there's no, no doubt that this is a really complicated project. And I think what, what everyone decided to do is, is form a multi-committee working group that included members from the CPC, members from the finance committee, member of the Board of Selectmen, and the offices of the town manager and the finance manager. And so, I think there were a lot of takeaways from that committee, a lot of questions that were asked in our visit, or our meeting with the committees, and our visit with a lot of the town committees. So, if we can go to the next slide? Oh, no, not this, I'm sorry. So, one of the things that came out of this in the FinCom and Board of Selectmen were really illustrative about helping us figure out how we can move this forward and explain this information to all the Town Meeting members. And so, some of the things that were of concern to the people who had input is what, what, what are the incremental operating costs that might be related to this, and, and how is the financing structured? And then, quite honestly, the value of the deed restriction. So, one of the things that the FinCom was particularly concerned about is, is what are the projections that are being afforded to the town of Norwood, and what could potentially happen if, for some reason, the project didn't go forward? So, I'd just like to talk about some of the benefits that are part of this project. So, the grant agreement is basically a guarantee that the CPC funds will not be distributed until the state funding is in place, and that if the certificate of occupancy for the operation of the facility is not obtained within 36 months, there is a clawback provision, so Norwood can take back the money. I should say that Caritas is, is, is putting themselves out there. They're getting mortgages and construction loans, and so, it's not like they don't have any skin in this game. They want to get the certificate of occupancy as soon as they are, is possible, and get the facility up and running and obtaining funding related to that. There's also a standalone agreement, a security interest, that is comparable to a mortgage, and that talks about our rights and responsibilities, and this document's filed at the registry. And then, thirdly, which I think is the most important, is we're obtaining a deed restriction on the property that will ensure that this property is only used for affordable housing in perpetuity. And so, I think that's a really important feature. The other thing I want to point out is, is those three agreements are available online. So, we did not include that with the handout materials, but if you go on to Town Meeting website or the CPC, there's a link to those documents, so you can take a look at, at that. And then, just another thing that I want to comment is, is we've worked with the VA, and they have indicated that they will make a NORB preference available for this project. Doesn't happen in all instances, but they have, are willing to give us that. So, we think that that's really important. Do you want to take a question now, or should I get the?
Let me finish up, then we'll take questions.
Okay. Okay. Oh, the other thing, just in terms of other things that were asked, where there was some confusion about the appraisal. The appraisal has come in, and that is also available, and the value of that is 1.6 million. So, if you can go ahead and take a look at that online as well. I know that we were definitely waiting for that. And so, I did talk about the benefits. I definitely want to talk about the expenses. We didn't have a bullet line in there, but there is anticipated that there will be a small incremental operating cost. At a meeting just recently, the finance manager indicated that the range of the incremental cost can be anywhere from 30,000 to 110,000. And what that's predicated on is the individual benefits of every resident at the facility. And so, what I can tell you right now is that there is no housed Norwood veteran that receives the maximum amount of benefits, and that if we sort of extrapolate that forward, it's highly likely that we would be coming in on the lower side of it, like 30, 50, 70, somewhere, but not upwards of the 110. And I also want to be clear that that will be offset by building permit fees, and also, Caritas, even though they're a nonprofit organization, will be paying the residential tax rate on that facility. So, there is some offset there. And so, just quickly about historically what we've been spending money, as you can see, 19 historic, 15 open space, three community housing. And of the three of those, two are memberships to an organization for 10,000 each. And so, the only housing project we have done to date is on Manhattan Street, where we did a window and siding repair. And so, I just have to tell you that this is like probably the most significant housing project that Norwood would ever get. And so, you know, we were excited about the opportunity to be able to provide support to this. Next slide. So, just graphically represented, historically, we've only spent about 9% of all the funding available on housing projects, and if we go ahead and fund the whole Caritas amount to 800,000, we'll be at a 23% number. So, we are heavily skewed towards historic, open space, and recreation. Next. And if we're fortunate to be able to be successful at Town Meeting and allocate the 800,000, we just wanted to point out that we will still have reserves in the housing, housing in the amount 66, and in the unrestricted fund, we'll have about 2.1 million. So, that's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. We'll do one, one in person, then we'll jump online. Kevin was first.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, we'll let you go all coupled.
One question would be, what would be the difference between this veteran's preference housing and the one that's being operated by the housing authority at Washington Heights? I believe that's still technically a veteran's preference housing authority. Second question is, what happens in a time that we do not have veterans available? Does that falter back into low-income housing, or what? Those are my two questions.
Awesome. So, do I take the second one? I'll take, I can take the first one. You talked about Jefferson Drive?
Yeah.
So, Jefferson Drive is family housing. So, these are individual, they're like little studios, so you're, you're attracting a different type of veteran. We wouldn't put a single, the folks going in here are going to be single. Jefferson Drive is family, two, three bedroom homes.
And also, Greg Richen is here from Caritas. He's the CFO and the real estate person, and so, I think he can probably take the next question.
Sure.
And also, I know you, did you have some slides?
Yeah, I got a couple of slides up there, but...
Awesome. I'm so sorry.
No, absolutely.
I'll just get going.
I think that was great.
Hi, everybody. My name's Greg Richen. Thank you for your question. I think the short answer to the question is it would always go to veterans, but they wouldn't necessarily be from Norwood. So, if we house, say, one veteran in Norwood, and then the rest of the veterans would be in the rest of the catchment area for the VA, which is the area of Boston and parts of the South Shore. So, I think that answers your question, but let me know if it doesn't.
No, I think he was more, what happens if there simply aren't enough veterans?
Oh, if there aren't enough veterans?
Yeah.
That would be a wonderful problem for us to have, but, you know, the, we would ultimately have to go back to the agency that we work with to fund the project and the Housing Authority and change our tenant selection plan if we successfully, in the state of Massachusetts, completely fix all veterans homelessness. That would be a wonderful problem, but I don't see us getting there in the short term.
I have one more.
Go ahead, Kevin, then we'll take an online one.
One quick. Are these units, or a couple of them, going to be ADA accessible?
Yes, at least three of the units will be fully ADA accessible. There will be a handicap ramp. We think it's really important, particularly for a homeless veteran population, to accommodate those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Ed online. Ed, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question on the funding. During the annual, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we allocated a million towards this project already?
No.
And now we're asked for eight hundred thousand?
No, sorry, let me correct that. The original warrant article in May was for a million dollars. It was withdrawn and deferred to the fall. So, this is not an additional eight hundred thousand dollars. This is eight hundred thousand dollars instead of that original article was a million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. That's what was confusing me.
Yeah, I can explain why.
I'm very much in favor of this project, so I've got no problem with that. I just wanted to clarify the money chain.
Sure. We'll go over here. Gene.
Good appraisal, a question about the appraisal, 1.6 million. Is that appraisal of the property as-is, or is that of the property in its highest and best use?
I'll defer, if you're more aware, usually for a property, it's highest and best use. Every appraisal the town has ever done has always been highest and best use.
Is that what was done for this?
Yeah, that's normally what commercial property appraisal is.
I believe it had both referenced in the document. The appraisal was available online, we're just going to grab it.
Chris will get us the answer in one second. While they're looking, I don't own an appraisal that generally isn't highest and best use, but appraisals are, nobody's a fan.
I used to be an appraiser. It's the only reason I'm asking.
We once got an appraisal while they're looking for that for a property that was several million dollars worth than the seller's appraisal, and they were, they did not like our number, and I, of course, liked our number, so I thought somebody was going to hit me across the table once, where our number was what happened with theirs was. Ours is probably a little too low, and hers is probably a little too high.
If this shows any light, it's appraised around nine hundred thousand today.
Appraised or assessed?
Assessed.
Okay, so those are assessed and appraised value are different.
So, bond the company was the group that did the appraisal, and they referenced both their as-is appraisal and highest and best use. And then, kind of, they have a whole value methodology description in their report. Again, this is available online, that's a good review.
So, 1.6 was highest and best use?
They have a reconciliation of values, they use income and sales comparison approach. So, they talk more about approach than the highest and best use.
We can circle back, we can, we'll just get your copy.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it on the CPC website?
It is.
It's on the CPC.
Okay, I'll look there.
So, it is there. There were a million, we'll go right here to Carol, and then I'll go along with Joe. Carol.
Thanks. So, the deed restriction is an affordable, it'll always be affordable. Is it also restricted to veterans? The deed restriction?
So, the deed restriction will be drafted by the state as an instrument, and so, Sarah Dixon, who's a community planner, is encouraging for it to be a little bit more broad than just a veterans' housing, in the event that something were to change in perpetuity, versus just a strictly defined veterans' affordable housing. But I think that's yet to be determined.
You're popping that up to Joe?
Well, that's exactly the question I have. I think the spirit of this project, as presented to the town, is to provide housing to low-income veterans. If that doesn't occur, and it's just low income, it's a totally different project. And I think people need to be alert. When I looked at the grant agreement, it's not complete on the website. There's no reference to veterans in terms of the low-income portion of it. I'd like to see, I'd at least like to see the draft of the grant agreement completed before Town Meeting, so we know what we're voting on. Will that occur?
I can just mention that historically, there's never been a grant agreement in place when CPC has come to Town Meeting. And so, the Finance Committee had a lot of concerns about the grant agreement, and so, I think we feel like we have a pretty baked grant agreement.
Right now, the grant agreement is not complete. It doesn't specify veterans. It just says low income.
Yep. Is Sarah Dixon online? Because I think she could answer this. Sarah?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But Sarah, can you hear me?
So, yeah, the deed restriction itself is usually a standard form that, as Catherine said, the state helps us put together. That can be very specific in terms of how many units of affordable housing are provided, at what, you know, level of income those units have to be open to for eligible households. And I believe it can be restricted more, but ultimately, that's not something that we have, you know, we have not received approval for that yet. We're just not at that stage. It's not something that we can begin working on that deed restriction right now, just given the phase of the project. However, the grant agreement is quite specific. It obligates Caritas to provide the services that they represented in their application to the CPC. And there are a number of protections that are offered to the town in relation to providing that service, when they get the certificate of occupancy, expending the funds and all of that. So, I would argue that the grant agreement is actually quite specific, ensuring that Caritas does what they've committed they will do with these funds. And, you know, it can't be executed before CPC award. That's, again, not conventional. But we've worked with Town Council and with Caritas, and we feel that that grant agreement is substantially viable.
Again, my issue is that I could see that this would go to low-income and not be totally restricted to veterans, and at least that door opens.
Sure, I think the deed restriction would likely have to change, is that correct? That's not a simple process. That's not simply you fill out a piece of paperwork. I think there's a challenge there, because you're right. In theory, if they're not able to get enough veterans, they would have to find somebody to fill the space, because the restriction is still based on low income. Here's another scenario. Ten years from now, there's seven veterans in there. They're just not making enough money to cover the cost. Do they let other folks in, or do they close it and kick them out? You're not going to see, you know, hey, we put out an ad for veterans, come here, and then three weeks later, hey, we didn't get enough people, let's go. You're probably talking about a year-long process, at least in my estimation, to try to change that. And I believe we, if it wasn't included in the final draft, there was a conversation that the grant agreement would include, they'd have to come back to the Board of Selectmen for permission to change that, as well as all of the other steps that they would have to do. But by no means is that simply a, eh, let's just change it and do it. You're talking about a lengthy, lengthy process.
I think if anything, there, we're not going to never have veterans. We might solve the veterans homelessness problem, but we're not going to be at a point in this country, I would highly imagine, where we never have veterans who aren't low-income. That would be incredible, but I highly doubt it.
My point is, it's not restricted to veterans totally.
I believe it will be at its open, though.
What's that?
In terms of the selection process on the Caritas side.
The grant agreement is restricted to veterans, so we...
But the deed restriction will not be?
We, it depends. I think the state will allow us to, but the funding sources will require that it's, that it's used to house veterans. So, while the deed restriction might be, might have to be left open-ended, the actual funding sources of the project, which are governing documents, would still require veterans' housing. So, I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question.
Can we request?
The deed restriction?
The deed restriction be restricted to veterans? Can we request that?
Yeah.
I think that's up to the town as well.
Will we request that?
I think we have to consider it.
This is being advertised as Vernon Street Veterans Apartments. I just want to guarantee that the deed restriction restricts it to the veterans. Right now, I'm...
Yeah, if that's not contemplated, then it certainly will be by the time the vote arrives. I mean, that is the entire intent of the project, is low-income veterans.
And the other aspect is the quality, what qualifies for low-income. From what I was reading, it's about eighty percent of the median income of the town residents. Can that be brought down to like sixty percent? So, we really do target the people with low income.
So, I think it's no more than eighty percent. Am I correct?
No more than eighty percent, and highest priority would be the lower income.
All right, let's go to John Hall. Is his name John? John, you muted it up.
Now, can you hear me?
We certainly can. Go right ahead, sir.
This is on the same issue that's been kicking around here. In the proposal from Caritas, there was a fair amount of analysis of the veteran-specific income sources that people who are applying for this property would have available to them under veterans' benefits. If you imagine that for any reason at all, that there's an opportunity for someone who's not a veteran to apply for one of these affordable properties, it will be, in all likelihood, less affordable for them, because they won't be able to add benefits from veterans' programs to their income base. So, it's not the same thing as saying that that will be made impossible by the rules, and I understand that that will be done before the politics place, but it is a factor that's out there that makes it much less likely, I think, that anyone who is low-income and not a veteran would be tempted to apply for one of these properties, because they couldn't make the numbers work.
Great, great, well, John, thank you. Michael, what's on your end?
Rachel.
Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you. One, and one question. Kind of on this point, there's a lot of reference to the application, which I'm sure includes an exceptional amount of detail. The project in the grant application is defined by reference to the application. I know that the application is being exhibited to the grant agreement, but it's not in the linked documents under Town Meeting. I'm also not finding it under the CPA website. Would we maybe take the application and plug that in with the rest of the Town Meeting materials? Because I think the detail in that might be helpful for review.
Absolutely, we'll get that up first thing in the morning.
Thank you, that's really helpful. And then, just a question. Could we just have a little bit more information about the discussion with the VA about the local preference, how that works, how it's documented, how, like, what's the enforcement action there?
Sure. Greg, do you want to contribute?
Yeah, I mean, we basically had a very high-level discussion with the VA, where they gave us the okay via email to use a local preference. As far as the logistics of it and how that would work, they're always going to prioritize the chronically homeless, disabled veterans from any part of the catchment area, and then there will be the local preference sort of beneath that, is my understanding.
I guess, conceptually, that makes sense to me. I think it would just be helpful to have a little bit more information on how that's documented, other than a high-level email.
Sure, Mr. Really?
Just contemplated going somewhere.
Sure, we can, we can... Mr. Document. This is Joe Really, Rachel, we can document that, but one thing that came up during the discussion is that local preference is actually managed by the VA. So, the, let's say a prospective resident applies for residency on, at 20 Vernon, he or she would submit the application through the VA, and through the filter, like the VA filtering process, would go through their normal steps. But one of their steps in the case of this property would be to filter whether or not that individual had ties to Norwood, either lived in or worked in Norwood. And if that's the case, then those preference points, if you will, would be added to that application. So, it's actually something that's monitored and managed by the VA in their normal sequence of events, as far as matching up residents with this property. So, we'll be sure to document it, but it's not, like, it's not, something like that, just to clarify, it's not in the town's hands to award that preference, nor is it in Caritas' hands to award that. It's strictly managed at the VA level.
Thank you. I think Rachel's question, that probably mostly answered it more, is what documents the fact that that's going to be there, other than just we said we talked to the VA? I think whatever, we can get something together on that would be...
Absolutely.
Am I correct, Rachel, that was sort of what you were...
Tony?
Yeah, that would be so helpful, and I appreciate the contrast, too. Thank you.
Yeah, Tony, I have a follow-up on that.
Go for it, at a moderator.
Thank you. What agency actually chooses the individuals for the housing? I don't think it is actually the VA that makes that selection, right?
The moderator. Oh, I'm sorry.
It is, so the VA via the Boston Housing Authority.
So, it's the Boston Housing?
Correct. Because they're the regional housing authority for this particular municipality.
So, the VA is an input into the decision, but the final decision is the Boston Housing?
That's correct. That's my understanding, exactly.
Okay, thanks, sir. Sarah, do you want to add something? Sarah, our planning director.
Yes, if you don't mind. So, yeah, just to kind of reaffirm what I said there. The VA makes the referral, they perform the tenant selection, they send that referral for the individual to the Boston Housing Authority, who does serve as the incrementary of the tax chapters, but their role is less about tenant selection and more about verification.
Thanks, Sarah.
And I can speak to that, having been on that side in a former life, working at the Boston Housing Authority on this program, that we weren't managing any wait lists for it. It was really just, you know, they send Sarah Dixon's name over to the Housing Authority, and the Housing Authority puts together a file for me, takes copies of the birth certificate and record of my service, and establishes my income, and figures out what my rent is going to be. But it's more of an administrative service. The VA is really ultimately at tenant selection.
Income certification and proof of service and all that sort of thing.
Other questions? There are a couple of answers. Sorry, Mr. Joe.
I just had a question on the amount of money, the total amount being spent on the project.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Five point five million.
Oh, sorry.
Project Valley.
The total development cost...
Seven point two million. I thought it was higher than...
Yeah, so, the five point five million is the total development cost, but there's also the acquisition cost of 1.6 million. So, it's really just over 7.1 million dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the majority of that would be funded by the state. We got, we were invited to apply for the pre-application to the OHLC in their fall support of housing round.
You had mentioned a sum of money between thirty and a hundred thousand dollars. Is that yearly, or is that a one-time?
No, it would be an annual contribution.
That's from the town?
Yes, yes, it's a local match. It's based on what the benefits are that each resident would receive.
Let me clarify what that is. The Commonwealth has what's known as a Chapter 115 Veterans Program. Every city in town in Massachusetts is obligated to provide assistance to veterans who are low-income, and the state actually reimburses a seventy-five percent of that cost. So, based on what a veteran's income is, would determine what they're actually eligible for. The maximum amount, I think it was twenty-four thousand dollars per year, but that's if you, you pretty much have to have no income to be able to qualify for that. If you even have, you know, ten or twelve thousand dollars in social security, that number comes way down. So, it is theoretically possible, if you were at the lowest end of the income scale, that it could be twenty-four thousand dollars a year, of which we get seventy-five percent of that back from the state. That being said, we do have some veterans' clients that get two hundred dollars a month, a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Some people don't even qualify for regular assistance. They would qualify for sort of one-time, there's different little pockets of money. So, that's why that number is tough to predict. I think, honest to God, dollars out of our budget, thirty thousand dollars is probably closer to reality, because it's rare that we have somebody, regardless of how low-income they are, that they qualify for that full annual twenty-four thousand dollar amount. It's exceedingly rare here and everywhere else. The state's veteran, local veterans' program is unique to Massachusetts. It's a bit of an inequitable system, because low-income veterans tend not to live in wealthy towns. If you're living off, you know, eight hundred dollars a month in SSDI or something, you're probably not owning a home in Westin or Wellesley or something like that. They tend to congregate in lower-cost and lower-income areas of the state, which just puts a further burden on those communities. But that's just me complaining about the program, it's hardly relevant to this specifically. Carol?
Will that amount of money should be in the Veterans Agent's line item?
Yeah, so that line in Teddy's budget, well, it's now Derek's budget, is the new Veterans Agent. Teddy's moved to sort of retired status. That number fluctuates based on just looking at the last couple of years. It's a, what I refer to as a commodity or an obligation. It's a, what I refer to as a commodity or an obligation. If 500 veterans move into town tomorrow and they qualify for it, we have to pay it. So the number will go up and down based on what that is. It doesn't mean like all of a sudden next year, and again, we're talking about after people moved in and after they've applied for the services. You'll probably see that fibrillate up over time, but you're looking at a couple of budget cycles before it does. And that's absent any other changes, as I said. That number could double next year if it just happens to double. Right here in the back.
I'm wondering why the area that the town has considered having the Norwood Housing Authority run a project like this instead of a private company?
So I guess I can speak to that on behalf of the Housing Authority. They would have to go after the different sources of funding, be looking to expand their portfolio. They really have limited capacity and limited staff. Other than their maintenance workers, Sean has become the executive director of the Housing Authority, there's two or three employees for the whole Housing Authority, and that's it. And they manage 550 units, but they really don't, they get their funding from mostly the federal government passed through the state. So it would probably be a challenge for them to start expanding and saying, okay, we're now going to go after all these different millions of dollars, and then we're going to build this program, we're going to manage that program. Probably administratively tougher than. For the same reason that the town, with our current structure, wouldn't do it. Some cities and towns do. We can never manage something like this individually in the town, but I just don't have the staff to deal with it and to do it. And the Housing Authority is very, very lean when it comes to their actual staff.
Okay. I'm curious, but it's fine.
Yeah, it's housing-wise, the Housing Authority.
They're managing it through somebody else. And I looked up the Caritas community executive structure, and, you know, they spend executives, their main pay is $60,000 a year. And so, like, who manages it, right? Somebody, I know they're nonprofit, but...
I always find 990's very interesting for what certain nonprofits pay. My guess is they just have the administrative structure to be able to do that. They don't, how many units do you guys manage?
We have just, we have just under 900 units, and this is, you know, the reality is most affordable housing is not run by housing authorities. It's run by private companies, generally nonprofits like Caritas.
And I think one of the unique things about it that interests us is the wraparound services, right? So they've got case managers working and trying to optimize the amount of money that they get that reduces the amount that Norwood have to contribute, and it's just a 24/7 operation. And so they are planned to have a live-in director, hopefully who would be a veteran. And I know the model's very well-respected in affordable housing, and so I think that was another check-in-the-box for the CPC members.
Great question.
Yes, sorry, just to follow up on the Housing Authority. We did, the executive director, Sean Bonnicle, was very much in favor of this, and I don't know if we've already received a letter of support, but Sean is writing a letter if he hasn't already. And the reason he's, obviously, one of the many reasons he's in favor of this is because this provides, it fills a gap in the service, you know, provide, from being able to provide service specifically in this flavor with the wraparound services. Because, again, that's not something that the Housing Authority is set up to do. But we do have his, we, the CPC, and this project, I'll say, this project has full support from the Housing Authority.
Henry, you have another question?
No, I was just going to say, one thing that bothers me is that this thing has been so confusing and so poorly presented from the start. It just seems like, you know, for a company that does this for a living, that it should have been presented much better than it was. It just seems like there's been a lot of questions and stuff. This thing's been going on for a year.
Sure. One of the challenges I think we all face is this is our first, I think this is Norwood's first outside funding project.
It's not careers.
Correct. But for, not that I'm not blaming somebody else, I believe me, I like to blame somebody else if I can. This is the CPC's first time, you know, our first time with town meeting and the thing on the board going through a large outside funding process. I think we provided 25 grand to the Historic Society for something, so there's naturally going to be some growing pains in looking at some of that. But point well taken. Other questions on this article? We can circle back at the end, and Caritas is available as well. We have a couple more articles we would like to discuss. I'm obviously in online. Nope.
You do have some slides there. You have to...
Okay. We kind of went through a lot of this, so I don't want to bore everyone. I think we've all talked about this, but I'm available if there's more questions. I mean, again, I've literally seen all your faces at least a couple times by now, and you've probably seen mine. But we've talked about the sources of funding, which are up there right now.
That's included in the materials as well.
Okay, it's online as well.
Yeah, all, this entire presentation is included. I might actually leave a stack of cards up here, too, just in case anyone wants to shoot me an email. I think, you know, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone either in this room right now or offline. I think the good news is we got through planning and zoning, so we are fully entitled. We have a schematic design set. We've got a great efficiency studio unit concept for this veterans' housing. And again, I'm happy to talk to anybody either now or, you know, in the future. So let me know.
Thank you, Greg. Moving on to the next article is Article Six, A Easement Near the Copley Middle School. This is just a poll relocation. Where Verizon requires an easement anytime a poll gets moved, we will be looking to grant them the easement for the middle school project. Unfortunately, even though it's simple and it's a poll relocation, still has to go through town meeting. Ann, go ahead.
So is this for the new building, or is this because of the new building?
Is there a real difference between for or because?
Yeah.
It's because of the new building.
Okay.
The service to the new building.
Yeah.
The service to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, to continue the service.
I think it answers both.
Okay.
Bye. Question online? Frank. Go ahead, Frank.
Is Verizon going to bring a service to the school in Norwood like it?
Is Verizon going to bring a service to the school in Norwood like it? Alan, what service particularly are they bringing? We're handling the internet. I think they're the backup. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, again, I think it is, you know, internet service. I mean, you know, there's, they're working, you know, Norwood Light is also providing some service too, I believe, but I think it's primarily internet and may even be phone-related services.
Yeah, the school's not going to be utilizing Verizon, but they're still interconnected in our network throughout town. Other questions on the easement?
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Frank. Article Seven, Removing the Town Normalizer's Restriction for Special Police Officers. Rachel, did you want, was it the previous article?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Just a little piggybacking on, it's this, these are, this is for phone, internet, but not cell, right? Because it's not for a tower.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Verizon has terrible service in town, if you ask me, but that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss Article Seven, which is removing the Norwood residency restriction for special police officers. We do, several years ago, we received from the state the authority or the permission to allow police officers retired from Norwood or over the age of 65 but have not yet exceeded the age of 70 to work details in town. At the time, we wrote it as just retired from Norwood police. We would now like to amend that to allow it if they retire from any police department in Massachusetts. We are struggling to fill details, partially based on construction, changes in lifestyles where younger officers sometimes aren't working details the way they otherwise were, and just fewer available details for the level of construction that we have. So right now, if you are over 65, you can only have worked in Norwood. We see no reason why somebody who worked in Westwood their whole career couldn't also do a detail between the age of 65 and 70. We, details are always offered to our active officers first, and they go to our retirees. This is that next class, but we are struggling to fill details on a regular basis. They're wonderful on a nice fall day, but when you see somebody out there in January and it's 2 degrees, or July when it's 97 degrees out there, those all of a sudden are not, not the most desirable detail. So this is just a simple change to prior legislation to allow that. Our late serials of weights and measures general bylaw, we are required to engage in weighing certain scales and other weights and measures. Unfortunately, the fees that we collect for that are set by state law, and the only way to change that, and we haven't changed it in probably 40 years since the state changed it, is to adopt a bylaw restricting the new fees, primarily for, and we look at other ways of doing this, and unfortunately, town council, the DOR, have ruled that this is the only way to actually raise these fees for weights and measures. The full list is included. Candidly, the majority of the weights and measures that we do are gas stations and supermarkets. There's a fee in there for a milk jug if you have a cow. I don't know the last time a cow was in Norwood. I don't know how one would get a cow to Norwood, come to think of it. Somebody brought that up earlier. We don't do very many of those, so I don't know what the revenue projection on those would be. It's mostly gas stations, grocery stores, delis, anywhere that you use a scale. We're just bringing these up to really the average for Norfolk County. We'll probably have to bring this back every five or 10 years to make sure we're keeping up with that average. Questions on weights and measures?
I'm curious about what the, what the fees are now. How much is it going up?
I think that's in the, I mean, some of them are going up substantially because they haven't raised them since the state changed the bylaw probably 40 years ago. So we're probably about 30% of the average of where Norfolk County is. So roughly every $100 fee they have, we're at like $20 or $30. We're still charging what we charged 40 years ago, candidly.
Okay. Thank you.
So just a funky, foolish way we have to do things sometimes. Does everyone know what an agroquise? Homework for town meeting.
Yeah.
Article Nine is adopting a local option sales tax for the sale of recreational marijuana. This is also kind of a quirky one. The town in Norwood actually voted to not have recreational marijuana. The state legislature passed a law allowing medical marijuana dispensaries, of which there is one in Norwood, permitted before a certain date to convert to recreational marijuana. So the one that we have in town is allowed to convert to recreational marijuana, and because the medical one is going out of business, they're looking to convert to recreational marijuana. We cannot do anything about it. We've been told by council and the state that you're just, you're stuck dealing with it. There's not much you can do about it. However, every town that does have a recreational marijuana dispensary does have the local option sales tax, which we would want to adopt similar to our meals and hotel tax since it's coming here anyway. Once it's all said and done, it'll probably be a couple hundred thousand dollars to the town, but they're not going to be up and running till sometime in the spring or the fall. We wouldn't be booking this revenue for a couple of years, but if we're stuck doing it, we might as well make sure we're getting the tax for it. Carol, now the line.
I'm just wondering, the medical marijuana thing is closing?
They're going out of business, or they're going back.
Because they didn't have enough business?
Correct. Yeah. Frank, go ahead.
Is the primary purpose of this to tack on tax evasion charges to people who are selling marijuana illegally?
Sorry, say that again? I didn't quite hear you.
Is the primary purpose of this article to tack on tax evasion charges to people who are arrested for selling marijuana illegally?
No, I don't think it is. Chief, do you think you'd be able to get away with that?
We don't enforce tax regulations.
Yeah, great answer. We don't enforce tax regulations.
It's the IRS.
I suppose you could call the IRS, I guess, if you can get through. That's a great question. Other questions on the local option marijuana tax? Rachel, go ahead.
I'm curious where the tax revenue of this could be applied. Is it going to a designated fund or to the general, like, pre-tax or make up?
No, so it's just all funds received by the town are general funds unless there's a specific law that otherwise states they go somewhere else, and this applies to that as well. So it just becomes regular revenue to the town. It will be listed under our local receipts, just like our meals tax and our hotels tax. That's not to say that in the year that we're able to book that revenue, we might not say, hey, if this is $200,000, do we want to increase compensated absences by that amount and fix it? You can do that, but it's not really going to that. It's all just revenue to the general fund.
Thank you.
Good question. Other questions on the, go ahead.
Do they have to be in the same location?
They do. Yeah. They'll have to seek, it's kind of funny, they have to get either a variance or a special permit, but we have to give it to them. Not quite sure why that's the process. It's basically the state has said they're allowed to do this. We have to allow them to do it. They couldn't undergo something that's fundamentally inconsistent with the zoning, even though zoning says you can't do it. So they couldn't decide to just build a 20-story building because they want to, and I don't believe they'd be allowed to move from that specific location on Route 1. These near-astera. Good question. Other questions on medical, sorry, on the recreational marijuana tax? Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's it. Nine articles. Prediction of four nights, I think we'll get done. I'm kidding. I think we'll be done in one. Thursday, the 24th, again, it's a little different, 6:30 in the auditorium. I will stick around if anyone has any additional questions. And again, you can always email my office directly or any of our department directors if you have any questions on any of the warrant articles. That is what we are here to do. With that, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for joining us online. We appreciate it. For the first time, we have more folks online than in person. So thank you all for doing that, and we'll get this reporting up and out to everyone. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.